Requesting that the Mayor and Administration of Florida American Traffic Solutions, Inc., City Council refund all red light camera revenue collected for ordinance violations issued at intersections with faulty light timing and old outdated traffic equipment. Referral by Mr. Newton. Mr. Newton, would you like to set it up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. What I have here is, it has come to my attention that we have numerous, up in the thousands, of law-abiding citizens receiving red light camera violations, ordinance violations, beyond any of their control. What I mean by that is we have malfunctioning equipment that's been dated and for the record. We have incidents where people are getting tickets where we shouldn't have issued a ticket and have paid them. And some of the stuff we've known about for a long time, but I think I even asked staff at one meeting if any rebates had been done, and the answer was no. I think that knowing that this is going on within this program, we should entertain at the council to make sure that people, law-abiding citizens who are receiving and have paid citations be refunded their money. And I'm making a request from staff, the state, and also American Traffic Solutions this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Kabecki.
Yes, good morning, Joe Kabecki, Director of Transportation and Parking Management Services for the City of St. Petersburg. We appreciate the referral from Councilman Newton. He did provide us with that in advance to give us an opportunity to investigate that allegation of equipment malfunction. It's important to note that the attachments to that referral were distributed to council last year and were discussed by council last year related to a perception that maybe there was a problem with the equipment. We take that very seriously, and that if our equipment is malfunctioning, we need to know about it. They have nothing to do with red light cameras, but we cannot have our equipment not operating properly. So, the allegation was that it was short cycling and the yellow time at some intersections were not being experienced in the field like they were programmed in the computer for the controller. We program into each traffic controller the amount of red time, yellow time, and green time that that controller can provide out in the field. And with that, we then can compute the capacity and a number of other things associated with that intersection. If they were short cycling or not following that, we would need to know it, and so we took this letter very seriously. We went out and took a look at every one of the signals that were discussed as possibly short cycling. We found there was no error, no problem, no malfunction in those traffic signals. All of those traffic signals were operating exactly per the timing that was given to that traffic controller, and the timing in that traffic controller was the exact time that we had given in the report that we had provided to council. So, the first thing is, is that there has been no malfunction. There's no problem with the traffic controllers out in the field. There's no short cycling of the yellow time, and everybody was given adequate time to stop at those traffic signals. They all met or exceeded the time provided by the Institute of Transportation Engineers for determining a yellow time. Then the question is, why did the notice of violation say something different than what was put into the controller for that traffic signal? So, we went and investigated that, and we found a number of things. But the first thing was that the computation of the yellow time on the notice of violation is unrelated to the issuance of the notice of violation. In fact, Mike Frederick met with and discussed with DOT just how that might occur. And I'm going to ask him to just say briefly what he told me, because he said it so much better than I could, as to the reason there might be a difference between an annotation in the corner of the notice of violation and actually the yellow time that that person experienced out in the field when he was approaching a traffic signal. Mike, could you tell what you told me, and then we'll go ahead and sum up on this.
Morning, Mike Frederick, Transportation Department. The state statute that authorizes the traffic safety cameras has a section in that statute that says a contractor cannot directly hardwire into the traffic signal controller cabinet to do any type of detection or manipulation of our equipment. So, therefore, they get their information from a passive calculator, passive detector that's attached to the power wire, which is, of course, not as accurate as our solid-state equipment. And that's how they monitor the amount of yellow time. And a small percentage of those detections were reported, and as we observed, were different than what is actually in the signal traffic controller equipment. So, that's the issue. Now, that brings up an important issue, in that the notice of violation has got a little annotation up in the corner of it that says maybe four tenths of the traffic was the yellow time. That's misinformation to the public. We didn't know that existed. Matt Laurel brought that to our attention. We now know that it has nothing to do with the issue of violation, so as it relates to this referral, there's no need to refund any money because there was nothing given in error. But it does bring up an issue. If we're unable to, because it's a passive connection thing required by state law, if we're unable to make sure that the actual yellow time is what is on the notice of violation, we may want to not put that on the notice of violation. Because again, it has nothing to do with the issue of the notice of violation. So, I leave that for discussion by council. I always, you know us, we do not want to ever put anything out that isn't totally accurate, and it could be misleading to the public, only from the standpoint that we don't have the ability, because state law doesn't give us the ability to go directly into the controller so that that number would be exactly the same between what the controller did and what's on the notice of violation. We can do that for red time, we can do that for other time, we can't do it for the yellow time. And so, I'll leave that with you for discussion, but I want to make sure for the record that everybody knows that no NOVs were issued due to a faulty timing plan or old or outdated equipment or anything to that effect. None were issued in violation or should not have been issued. And also, you all know that a police officer before any notice of violation is sent out, views these, views the tape of the violation, and they are the ones that issue the notice of violation. So, I just wanted to fill that in for you, let you know that we did do the investigation. We and DOT and the controller equipment people and everybody else that we brought in on this issue are all comfortable and agree that the controllers are operating absolutely fine, and there's no problem with that. We will get into more detail on discussion of this on January 16th at the PSNI meeting, where we were prepared to give the second annual update to the red light camera program, and would be more than willing to discuss this further then also. Thank you.
To my new business item, and you had a good segue on it, so if you're standing there telling me that since the inception of the Stop on Red or Red Light Camera Program, all of the equipment, all of the controllers at every intersection have been operating properly, that what you're saying today, is that correct?
I'm saying that every, all the equipment when issuing, no, I mean, there's times when people run over traffic signals. There are things that we constantly maintain our traffic signals, but as it deals with the issuance of a notice of violation, all of them have been operating properly for the duration since the program started. Or if there's a problem and we did exceed, see, you know, like this with this timing, we've investigated and found that it had nothing to do with the notice of violation.
Mr. Kabecki, I remind you of a subsequent meeting last year when yourself and Mike Frederick was here, and informed us that we had not one, not two, not three, but four controllers that were old and outdated and that were not operating properly, and since then they have been replaced. That was the exact words I heard. And I think I asked the question at that same meeting, are those four controllers worthy of red light camera inspections? And the answer was yes. Also, I asked, was any, during the time that they were messed up, did we have any refunds for maybe tickets issued while it wasn't working like it was supposed to? And the answer was no. So, if you're telling me today that everything since inception of the Stop on Red, Red Light Camera Program, all the equipment is operating properly, at the intersection where we have red light cameras, that's what you're saying today, that goes totally against what was told to me when you guys stood there last year?
Councilman Newton, with all due respects, I don't think that's the context of the discussion that we had. At the time we gave that presentation, this adjustment brought to our attention that there was a question out there, and I was saying that we need to investigate it. There's things that could have made this occur, and we will get to the bottom of it and find out what happened. I had no time said that the equipment was not working properly and that any of the notice of violations were issued in error.
But to my new business item, I'm talking about...
Mr. Newton, I'm sorry, interrupt, but the issue today is error on the issuance...
Equipment.
No, no, of the, and asking for refund, he's giving it, that discussion that you want to have is what we're going to do on the 16th, I think is a more appropriate time.
No, so, Mr. Chair.
So, I will go ahead and...
My question is on my new business item, and I'm trying to get to my new business item. It specifically states about old outdated malfunctioning equipment, powers and red light camera equipment. It's on the new business item.
And he has already said, he came and he's already said that it's functioning properly. We need to move on to Mr. Gertis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second to the motion that we have anything to really discuss? Because if there's no second, I don't believe there's any need for discussion.
I'm not even sure a motion was made.
It was not a motion, there was a motion without...
Um, I've been a supporter of red light cameras since the beginning. When I ran for office, I publicly supported red light cameras. And I know, you know, Matt has done an unbelievable job of watching over this and informing us and giving us facts and all that, and for that, I thank him tremendously because, you know, you have an engaged citizen who's trying to make sure that the city's doing the right thing, and I appreciate that very much. We have a red light or a yellow light report coming to PSNI on the 16th, and here's my thinking on this, and I'll make this in the form of a motion, that 30 days subsequent, within 30 days subsequent to the January 16th PSNI yellow light report, the council have a workshop on red light cameras in general. There may be some policy issues, like coming up with a policy that says if you're two tenths over, you don't get a ticket, or three tenths over, you don't get a ticket, something like that. But what I'd like to do is suggest and move that we have a workshop no later than 30 days subsequent to the January 6th PSNI. We flush this all out, a single subject meeting, and make some decisions.
Is that a motion to defer until that time?
Well, it's not a motion to defer in the sense that I take a motion to defer to put off to some general time. I'm asking for a specific time, no later than 30 days.
That is a motion to defer. You're saying put off the discussion until this time.
Then it's a motion to defer to a specific date, no later than 30 days from January 16th.
Here we have a second. Okay. Are you to further discussion on? Okay, Mr. Kennedy?
I think I'm going to oppose the motion because I don't think it's our prerogative to establish the administrative procedures on how the red light camera is controlled. I think we leave that to our qualified experts in our traffic department, and I think we leave that to administration. I believe, as previously established, we have the right to enter into the contract. We may have the right to void the contract, but we do not have the authority to administer the red light program. I believe that exists with administration. We don't have the authority to say which intersections you should go at, and so I think the workshop that you're requesting is something that's outside of the authority of city council.
The...
Did I respond?
Well, I'm on a...
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead. It's on this topic.
I totally agree, I totally agree that we have restricted authority. I don't think that means, however, that we cannot meet as a body, consider and recommend, recommend policy direction to the administration, and whether the administration chooses to implement the recommendation or not, I agree with you, it's totally up. But I just don't, I don't want to send a message that because we have the authority to enter into the contract and the authority to terminate the contract, that we're going to be hands-off on this. I think we can still make policy recommendations, and that's what I'm suggesting. That's all.
Okay, go ahead.
I would like to talk for a second about something that I hope we could talk about at that time, which is, which is right on red. Of the 24,000 citations that were rejected in the last year, 21,688 were right on red. Slow right on red. And so, my point is that we have seven people that are checking each of these citations. And I know that Clearwater, because so many of the right on reds don't result in a ticket, Clearwater has simply decided that they're not going to deal with a right on red as part of the cameras. And frankly, if we did something like that, we wouldn't need seven people checking tickets if, I mean, think about that, more than 90% of all the rejections are right on red. Now, what I, now, what I've asked for, that I don't have a number on, and I'll ask if you can bring that to the next meeting, is how many people, how many citations do we write that are right on red? Maybe you actually have those.
Yeah. We've got the report that we're going to give on the 16th, so it's in a draft format. It does have that information. 35% of the citations that are issued are for right turns, 23% are for left turns, and for straight through, it's 42%. And there are reasons why we may want to consider maintaining the right turn on red, but I would be happy to get in detail, because you kind of get down the weeds when you get into that on the 16th.
I would appreciate that, because it may be an opportunity to save some money.
We're kind of getting off track here. Can we go ahead and let's, the item before us is, can we eliminate that, and then we'll talk about doing a, if we want to do a workshop on, at a later time, we can do that, but I'd like to address this and get this out of the way, because it's kind of muddy in the waters here. We got a lot of stuff that is sort of related, that ain't doing with red light cameras is related, but this doesn't have to do with our particular item here, which is, again, I'll read, requesting the Mayor, Administration of the State of Florida, American Traffic Solutions Incorporated, and City Council to refund all red light camera revenue connected for ordinance violations issued at intersections with faulty light timing and old outdated traffic equipment. Mr. Kabecki has already said in his statement that we, that our equipment is up to snuff and everything is fine.
We've investigated it, and all of our equipment is up to snuff.
And so, addressing this particular issue, call for roll call. The issue is...
You got a second, you got lights, and you got people even spoken here.
Thank you for telling me what I have.
All right, I'm sorry, but I know you...
I have my, I have...
I have to follow the process, please.
Well, you tell me about the process, I've got the book and I read it, so. And again, I'll go back to my opening statement about civility, if you want to do the right way and the wrong way to do things. We have this, and there needs to be a second for this, is that right?
Yes, I have a second.
We need to have a motion, the motion's been made, we have to have a second for this particular item.
But...
No, that's not what we're at.
Actually, I thought, and I may be wrong, but I thought Councilmember Curtis's motion was to defer all discussion on this item and red light cameras and yellow light.
Oh, okay, maybe I, okay. Is that correct? Okay, and we're voting on Mr. Gertis's to defer all this until the...
Workshop.
30 days.
30 days from the 23rd.
A little later then.
A little later than 23rd. Point of information?
Yes.
I believe, if I remember correctly, and I think I do about our policy, sorry, sorry, Mr. Chair, just wanted to make sure we're following the procedure, I think the public is supposed to be, I think our policy says the public is supposed to be allowed to speak before we vote.
Yes.
So, I think...
We have two cards.
We have three.
Three cards.
Their, state law says that on, at some point during the decision-making process, the public should be allowed to speak before final action is taken.
So, we could either technically, we could do it now, or we left, the committee meets, and we bring it back up here and they can speak then, and that would be before, correct?
Correct.
We'll go ahead and do it today since we're here. And mind you, you have your three minutes, and Matt, I know you're one of them. I kid, Matt, who are Matt and who else?
Mr. Laurel is the first speaker, then Lorraine Margeson and T. Lassiter.
And yes, yes, Councilmember Cornell, your policy is, and you allow people to speak on any of that.
Yeah.
I was mentioning the state knowledge. The man in that court.
Thank you for letting me speak. Well, you know what I'm here to talk about. I hope you all had a chance to look over the report that I sent to all of you on Monday. I'm just going to go over a few key points. First, some of the yellow signal times were actually lowered recently in the last few months. I know some councilmembers, Nurse and Gertis, specifically asked that no yellow times be lowered. Last year, I just wanted to make it known that they were, there were some that were lowered. This resulted in a spike in straight-through citations at especially one of those approaches, which saw straight-through citations, the daily average, go up over 300%. Now, this is why other citations are going down. Second, I discovered that the slope or grade of an approach was not being used when calculating yellow signal times in emails exchanged with city staff. I hired a local traffic engineering firm to survey one of the approaches and found that its yellow time was too short because of that, resulting in hundreds of tickets for people that would not have run a red light if the time had been calculated using slope. Third, I recalculated the impact of the short yellow citations, and yes, I do have video of some of these, and yes, if you go frame by frame in the video, you can clearly see that the time on the video is accurate, unless the entire video is accurate, in which case we shouldn't be using the videos to prosecute these people, if you're saying the videos are inaccurate. Fourth, I found that the police review rejection rate has spiked recently, reducing number of issued citations, even in some cases where the number of triggered violations went up from month to month. I just wanted to mention that because that is part of it, not driver behavior, but actual rejection rate going up. That should be weighed as part of the reason that the citations are going down. Now, it was a jump from an average in the 40s up to, I think it was a 46% average, up to 61% rejection rate, so that is significant. That affects hundreds of citation, potential citations, so that is something that should be mentioned. Lastly, you probably want to know what the cost of refunding these short yellow citations would be, since nobody's mentioned that. I did recalculate it, and the number fell significantly because the yellow times I was using a year ago were based upon the original red light camera report, and it had a 20-page table that didn't include everything, like left turn signals, and some of the, some of the yellow times in there weren't actually what the old times were set to. So, taking into consideration that out of all citations issued, only about 70% are paid, 30% go unpaid, and the city only gets to keep about 19% of the total revenues that come in anyway, that would mean the city giving back its take would be about $30 per citation, which would result in about a $22,000 cost. Now, that's just averages. I have, I've given a copy of the spreadsheet to the city clerk that has all the citation numbers and everything on them, so it wouldn't be very difficult to ask ATS to give us the disposition of whether those are paid or not. Thank you.
Right on.
Good morning, welcome to all the new council members, by the way, and the new mayor. I didn't hear anything today that made me feel any better about our red light camera contract. And if you didn't know, the House panel in Cali just voted to ban red light cameras, so this discussion may be moot shortly. But anyway, I totally support Councilman Newton's new business item, which I know is not going to fly, but, you know, I'm just waiting for the time that canceling the contract altogether comes back before the council, and I'm in hopes that that will happen at that time. There is no confidence level whatsoever I have in this entire system. Before the transition team meetings, I actually spoke to Sheriff Bob Voltiere at length about this, because I was going to be on the Public Safety Transition Team, but then I went to the Strengthening Neighborhoods, which I'm glad I did, it was a good one to be on. But he is, as you probably all know, adamantly against red light cameras and clearly calls them a revenue generator, not a safety issue. So, you know, I know there's different police chiefs and different sheriffs who will say things this way, that way, or the other way, but just hearing, and you know, I've been here for several of those meetings last year, and I sure got the impression that we had some equipment problems, and I was here at the meetings. So, I just have no confidence in what we're being told. I have no confidence in that the city is doing right by the citizens, and I think people who got violations in error need to get their money back, and if we don't do that, then we're just skimming the citizens, and that's just wrong. Thanks for listening, and I look forward to this subject coming back, but stay tuned, Cali might take care of it for us. Thanks.
T. Lassiter.
I'm T. Lassiter. Number one, I thank God for the red light ordinance, because it slowed me down. And I do think it is a big part of safety. I believe that, I'm in the community, and I ride all day long, okay? And I love it now because I can see the little glimmer when you're going through and the lights changing, so I know if I done made it, or I know if I need to stop. But what's more important to me, this is a new year, help me, Lord, and it's a new beginning. I made it very clear who I supported. But one thing that I will not tolerate and be quiet on, this man Joe Kabecki just stood here and said that when he got the letter, they did an investigation. It showed no allegation of short cycling, no errors with the signals or the malfunctions, no NOVs. We got serious problems, and this is serious times. I listened to the other discussion. Do you all not remember, we are just coming out of a recession, but it's time for the citizens, including my people in Midtown, we got to start doing the right thing. If the law says stop on yellow, don't run the red light, then you stop. Yesterday morning, I had dropped my grandchild, my grandbaby off at Lakewood Elementary. I made it to 16th Street, and two officers was there. I said, "Boo, I need you to go to 6th Street," because they got the things out there for the 15 miles an hour speed, cheering, walking to school, and people done overslept, it's cold. We got all this construction, and they still going over the speed limit. I sent the police there, gonna keep sending them. We need to quit worrying about little petty stuff until they do what she said, I know been discussing it. If they do away with red lights, okay, but as for me, it's a safety thing. It's making people conscious that, hey, you don't speed, you stop at red lights, because it's easy to hit somebody. But when you think about how some people die, how some people are hurt. I came up 16th Street with my grandkids, and this kid, he hit me from behind like you would not believe. They've been wanting to cut on my back for 15 years. With the city, I had to deal with them, we had to issue. A manhole cover flew up, and you need to just face reality. We speed, we don't do the speed limit. We don't do 35, come on, it's time to tell the truth. And on 1st Avenue South, and then when y'all have them games, and they been drunk all that beer at the dome and everything, man, please, leave this mess alone.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Gertis. We have roll call, please.
Well, you got, you got lights on the motion, Coach, I would like to speak to the motion.
Are these old lights, or is this...
You know, everybody pushing lights, and you trying to vote without letting people talk.
Well, as I mentioned before, as long as it's on this topic, and when I asked, it was all of it, so that's why I'm moving on. Are we talking on Mr. Gertis's motion?
Motion to defer.
Point of information, Mr. Chair. Is it not correct, though, that if you're motioning to defer, that we stop discussion at that point? Because if we defer, it's deferring all the discussion, or am I, is that incorrect?
You can discuss the motion to defer. You can, you can discuss the motion to defer.
Okay.
Well, you got all the lights lit up and you wanna just vote without-
And I thought the chair's discretion, right?
Well-
Okay.
The chair runs a meeting unless, unless council overrides the chair's decisions. That's always been-
Well, let's, Mr. Rush, you've already spoke, we'll use this in the light.
That's an old light.
Okay, next is Mr. Newton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate you entertaining my motion to look out for the law bodies, that is who are definitely getting tickets unbeknownst to them. I can't support going to a workshop and I concur with Councilmember McCann, and I want legal, if you would, John, forgive us again for the new people that's here. What power does council have over this red light camera program or stop on red program? Please, sir.
Your power is to end the contract.
And behold, meetings, make recommendations, change anything?
Your real power is to terminate the contract.
Thank you, Mr. John. Well, with that in mind, I make a motion to terminate the contract with American Traffic Solutions and ending the red light camera program.
The motion to defer has precedence over-
You can't, I can make a substitute motion to the defer motion?
No, once the defer motion's on the floor, it takes precedence.
Okay, well, we'll wait. That's my light, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We have no second on the motion? Yes, no?
Well, he's saying that, John, you wanna declare, because he's asking-
You have a motion to defer-
Has precedence over-
Substitute motion.
Okay.
That's what he just told me, okay.
All right. Next is the mayor.
I was not, I did not push my button to speak on the motion.
Okay, well, somebody-
I, I pushed it for, to speak on something else related to the city.
Mr. Cornell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My concern is asking us to be judge and jury, I think if we, what I could potentially support on this, but we'll discuss it if it gets deferred, is setting up a legal, you know, having some, some type of legal review to decide, you know, because there's too many questions we don't, like, we don't know how many of the people who were not given tickets would fall into that category, would be in the category of claiming that the, the yellow light didn't function, you know, those kinds of things. So I don't, I don't feel comfortable to judge every single, all of those tickets. I think, I think there's, that should be a judge or a magistrate who's making that decision, myself.
Just for the record, for everybody to understand, there was no evidence that we came up with and we worked with DOT and others, that there was any short cycle, anybody was issued a notice of violation due to error of equipment or in error in any way. So I just wanna make it clear that, I know there's a lot of discussion that that's the case, but that's not the case. And so there have not been any errors made, to our knowledge, and we've thoroughly evaluated with the powers of opinion. Thank you.
I, I appreciate that. I am still against the program, I would vote to cancel the contract and I'll just leave it at that.
Mr. Kennedy?
I'm ready to set my piece.
Mr. Curtis? Councilmember Rice?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Chair. I would support deferring this conversation because even though I am also not highly in favor of this program, I would like to hear more information that would be presented on the 16th regarding some new safety data. And I would also like to, if it's at all possible to coordinate this, I'd really like to have Mr. Florrell sit in a room with his data, with Joe and with Mark, and have a discussion, because Matt brings up some really good questions and some really good elements to think about. And, and I trust Joe's data as well, and I would like to have the opportunity to hear the two of them work out the data together, not necessarily try to figure it out here, and only get to hear three minutes from Matt. I'd like to hear a longer conversation between him and Mr. Kibicki. Having said all that, I'm not sure where we'll land on what kind of conclusion we'll come to as far as the controversy over the yellow light timing. I have problems with this program apart from that, but I'd like to make my decision based on scrutinizing all of the up-to-date data. Thank you.
You, thank you. Councilmember Foster?
Yes, I'll just echo what Councilmember Rice just said. I publicly said that I am against this program and I continue to have concerns about the public trust, but it is complicated. After reviewing data, I can say to the public that they do reduce crashes. However, I do have concern that we have cameras that are showing in the ticket this, this difference in timing, and, and that's a concern. I'll also recognize Matt's concern about the yellow signal times being lowered, but when I did additional research, I understand that the Department of Transportation sets those times. And so the issue is complicated for the city. You're asking us to address that when that's really an issue that the Department of Transportation has purview over. So I'd like some additional time to review more data around this. Yesterday, I was presented with year one data from an outside evaluator, the Kim Lee Horn Engineers, it's about this large. I also was told that January 16th will have a further review. And like Councilmember Rice, I'd like for you to have more than three minutes to present the information that you have as well. So I continue to be concerned, I'm concerned about refunding money when we only have 19% of that. I have had a number of citizens write me with concerns about police officers and code officers who are not being ticketed. I brought those concerns to the mayor and the transportation department yesterday. They are on top of that and that's being worked out. I hear that some of that is not completely true, but know that we're taking all of those things into consideration and I think that being able to have a longer discussion will bring us to more fruitful results.
Okay, thank you. We, did you, you didn't have enough light, did you? Okay, take it to a vote, we have Mr. Curtis's, again, it's to defer this within 30 days of the 23rd.
Of the 16th, PSNI.
16.
Curtis?
Yes.
Kennedy?
No.
DePuy?
No.
Rice?
Yes.
Cornell?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
April?
No.
Foster? Motion passed.
Okay. Moving along then, next we have a request from Mr. Kennedy, if you would like to-
Go ahead, Chair. First, let me review-